Welcome to tonight's, this is October nineteenth, welcome to tonight's OGAAT meeting. I'm the committee chairman Saul Silverstein, we have with us committee member Gary Del Piano, committee member Mike Muddit. Coordinator Ron Davis, assistant coordinator Chris Kelly and recording secretary Marlene Silverstein. The first item on the agenda for that is questions and comments, does anyone have any? No, then we'll move on to, I put the minutes of the February ninth meeting, which is the last meeting we had a quorum at. Uh, we can't vote on it, it's just on the agenda as a placeholder, so we'll just table that again. Next item is the OGAAT budget, uh, everyone should have a copy. On. One side, yeah, okay, the first side shows. Five line items, that's our town funded budget, which is seventy eight thousand nine hundred dollars. It shows eighty two nine, maybe it is eighty two nine, and so far we spent about ten percent on supplies. Spent nothing on recording secretary apparently, um, forty one percent on coordinator. Thirty percent on assistant coordinator and about five percent on, um, camera operators. Second side shows what has been officially recorded for our spending on the cable advisory council grant. It only shows one item, which was our services from Telview, which was renewed for three thousand and sixty dollars. There were some other items that we will discuss in a little while, uh, that have been ordered. Any questions on the budget?
None.
No, no, okay, um, coordinator report. I sent two coordinator, I sent the coordinator report from. August, because I found an error on it yesterday when I was reviewing them. There was a, a line on the second page. That said July twenty twenty three program changes and it should have said August. So that's been fixed, it's just a correction, that one word direction. To that coordinator report that we discussed at the last meeting. Uh, and then we have the September coordinator report. And I'll quickly review that, so in September. There were ten meetings and two special events. The special events were the Labor Day concert, we counted it once, when we, we, Chris broadcast that live for us.
Yeah.
And that, that was kind of amazing, I was sitting behind him and he did all this equipment set up with monitors. On, on the, on the field at High Plains Community Center. And, uh, the second notice of that, the second incident on the report is just the disc version of that other recorded version that gets shown on the air. So we had total twelve programs in September. Um, in terms of hits, uh, Telview had a hundred forty two live hits and thirty eight video on demand hits. On YouTube, we had a combined total of nine hundred forty six hits. Comment wise, all the equipment that we ordered under the cable advisory council grant. Was received and has been checked out by Chris and is working properly. One rechargeable battery pack was defective on arrival and was quickly replaced by the vendor. Within just a few days and some, we still have some additional items to order. And we'll talk about that when we talk about the grant in a little, a few minutes. Uh, we have not yet heard from Comcast as to when they will be installing their service. And any related equipment into the OGAAT studio, they did talk to us a couple of months back about installing, uh. Their service in, in the studio, haven't heard from them about that since. So that is the September coordinator report, any comments?
Nope.
Nope, go on. Uh, bicentennial activities, there was one more. Bicentennial interview recorded. Uh, that I noticed. Forgot what I did with it. So we have thirty eight now. See if I can find it. The last one was Eloise Phelps Clark. And that was recorded on May twenty first of this year, all the others were recorded in twenty twenty two. Uh, is that, that is the last one, is it not, Chris?
As of now, yes, there's no more, um, at this moment.
Okay, yeah, did, did, um, Ms. Williams say there might be more?
Um, at the moment, I don't think there's any more, uh, but there, there could be, but I, I don't think so.
All right, so that, that's the last one as far as we know. And they have all been shown on OGAAT typically. They go on three or four at a time. For a couple of weeks and then they rotate through some others, I think the last ones up there were actually the last, the last four. Any questions on bicentennial, bicentennial activities? Uh, action items. So there's. Four action items left, three action items. One is add procedure for recording and broadcasting virtual meetings. Uh, second is update procedures for changes since the publication of. Uh, the last procedures, I guess. Including the effect of the switch from discovered to Telview for streaming and VOD. And equipment schematic update for new equipment. So, uh, I know Chris has kind of been buried, I don't know that you're getting at this stuff.
No, I'm, I'm not, um. I haven't made much progress with that, um, yeah. So maybe if we can, you know, pick it up next month, there should be progress on the procedures, I've started to kind of draft how that's gonna go. Um, so next month I'll have more on that.
Okay. Okay. Next item is the CAC grant, so on the CAC grant. We ordered and received everything with the exception of one thing, we did not order the drone. And the reason we did not order the drone is. I started thinking about this and, um. I got concerned about liability issues. Um, that thing could possibly. Lose control and if we're over some event with a lot of people like at the High Plains Community Center Field. Um, could crash into somebody or crash into a piece of equipment. Um, and cause some damage or injury. And I did speak to some town officials. And, um, I was told by one that, um. Uh, they did have, when, when, I think the police department, the fire department first got drones. Um, they were very concerned about, in fact, they couldn't get insurance coverage on one of them. Um, because they were very, and they were very concerned about liability issues. Um, I think they are insured now, uh, the two, the, the two that the town does own. Um, and I just got kind of nervous about the whole situation. Spoke to Chris about it a little bit and, you know, I, I mean, he could be controlling it fine, but if something goes wrong with the device. It could crash into somebody and I don't know that we. Really would want to deal with the liability issues, even if it is insured.
Um, so Saul, quick question on that, so I, I, I'm fine with us not doing it for liability issues as well, but. I thought we didn't get the full funding from, that we requested from the, which is the other reason we didn't buy that.
Yeah, well, yeah, so this is, this is the other interesting part of that. This happens every year, we get a quote. And then. Something changes between the time we get the quote and the time we actually make the order, it's more than the thirty days the quote is valid for.
Right.
That's what happened this time, we had much more than thirty days from the quote to the time we actually got the grant funds. So we got less grant funds, but. During that time also, the pricing changed. And there were some items that we purchased. That went up a little, but one item went down quite a bit. To the point that. We didn't have enough for the drone, we now have more than enough for the drone left.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we have on the order of forty two hundred dollars, a little bit more than forty two hundred dollars or forty one hundred dollars. That we have to spend, so I have asked Chris. To make another wish list. To, um, see if we can spend that. And that, but again, this is my view of the world, I. Welcome the input from the committee.
I, I mean, I agree, if you, if you're asking if you agree not to get the drone, I fully agree with that, that's fine, I mean, the town having two drones of its own, I think. The town of Orange Plain doesn't need three drones, even if this is grant money. Um, we, we can probably borrow one or have the police drive it when we want to get that kind of a, a shot. Uh, and they have been very helpful in that in the past, so I'm not, not opposed to that. I, I think personally and like whatever Chris recommends from his list is definitely worthy of consideration. Um, but like, you know, we're always at the need for more hard drive space and more stuff like that, so I, I don't think it would be a problem. Um, you know, using up the funds, I don't think we'll have to return it to the, to the, um. The, yeah, the committee.
Gary, you have any input or?
No, I think, I, I, I don't think we need it, I, I, you know, if the town has one, we can borrow every so often. That's more than good enough, you know, how, you know. How many times you're gonna use it, you have maybe six or seven outdoor. Outdoor, um, things each year, I mean, you know. If you, you know, so I, I, I think it's fine.
Alright, uh, so Chris, um, Chris is, I know Chris is working on the list and, um, he'll have it in a few days, I hope, and then.
Good job, Chris, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And we can decide, you know, if it doesn't add up to the. The amount we have, we can always throw the extra amount into the labor account and help pay his salary also, so. Uh, so that's where we are with, um. CAC grant. Equipment inventory is next on the agenda, it is up to date, um. Uh, everything that we have is now on the inventory list. Um, ninth item on the agenda is committee vacancies. So I sent you all a letter, I had a conversation with town attorney Moreno. Right after the last board of selectmen meeting, which was a week ago Wednesday. And I, I told him that, look, we haven't had a quorum, we haven't had, we've had, we've got a committee of seven members and a. A, a, a number of active members is only three, so we don't have a quorum, because the quorum requirement is four. And he, uh, sat with. Me and looking on his computer, he was looking at the town code and what other regulations he could find about quorum size. And basically came to the conclusion that. Um, the only way right now to change the quorum size is to change the size of the committee and lower it from seven members to five, which would make three the quorum. And, uh, I said, yeah, but that's, unless we get more members, that's. Short term solution that might let us get a couple of meetings in, but it really. Solve the problem long term, we need to get five members, and I know Jim has had a tough time finding. Members for not only this committee, but apparently some other committees, I think, I believe. Mr. Moreno mentioned that the library. Committed, the committee that runs that went down from a large size to a small size for the same reason. Um, so he basically sent me an email, which I forwarded you. Consider sending a request that chapter sixty eight of the town code be amended to reduce the number of members of the OGAAT committee from seven to five. And I sent you a copy of chapter sixty eight, which is basically. What OGAAT is and what it does and what it's supposed to do. And it says, um. Committee shall consist of seven voting members appointed in accordance. With the town charter and one non-voting student representative. So I started to draft. If the committee agrees. I, I started to draft the letter to Jim. Asking that he. Request the board of selectmen at the next meeting to change the size of the. OGAAT from five, from seven members, seven voting members to. Five voting members. Um, and looking at that student representative thing, we haven't had a student representative since the very, very beginning of OGAAT. When I think Mike Muddit was the student representative and his sister was the representative. For, for a couple of meetings and we haven't had one since, so we only had a student rep for a couple of years. Um, so I don't know that we really need it, um, so I might. Suggest that we also, we can get rid of that sentence.
I, I mean, I, I don't think it hurts to have it, it's non-voted, so it doesn't count towards the quorum. Um, I mean, it'd be great to, like, I mean. God bless Chris and Ron, they're great, I'm not saying anything, but I, I, it was also a great pipeline for talent. Um, so I, I mean, we haven't reached out to anybody in a while.
Can you reach back and pat yourself on the back a little bit more?
Okay, no, but anyway, so, no, like, I, I mean, I, I think, I, I don't think it hurts us to have it. It, it's not like we have to make up the spot, but it'd be good in case we do get some interest from an Amity student.
Okay, so I won't ask them that part.
Yeah, I think as long as we go down to five voting, we're fine.
Gary, what's your opinion?
Can we change, um. It to read five or. Five to seven members. So that we can have a quorum at five, but if we find some other people that want to be on the board, we can add them rather than having to change it again.
I can ask Vinnie that question, because, um. He didn't mention that, uh, when we talked about it, um. I said, you know, when I said it's, it's really only temporary, he says, well, you can have them change it back to seven. He said something like that. Um, I don't know, Chris was in the room with me, because he was, we were doing it in the studio, we were talking in the studio and Chris was working in the studio. I don't know if Chris remembers any of that conversation, did, do you recall that part? No, okay, I, I could, I could ask Vinnie if, if, if.
I mean, if you, if you think it's not worth it, then don't bother, but I just thought. That way you wouldn't have to go back to them.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, my only question is, does this, because I mean, I thought when we became a standing committee, like it went into like the town. Ordinance or whatever, wouldn't they need a public hearing to change that?
I don't think so, I think it was just, uh, approved by the board of selectmen, I, I remember going to the board of selectmen and requesting that we be made a standing committee. And then they voted on it and did it, they may have put it off for one. They may have put it off for one meeting. For one month, but then they just voted on it.
Okay.
And I think, I, I think that's the process for. Changing the code, the town code.
Yeah, I mean, I thought there was a public hearing, I'm sure nobody would come out and argue with it, but yeah.
Maybe there is, I don't remember, but.
But I'm sure Vinnie and, Vinnie and the town hall can figure that part out, we'll just, we just make the recommendation.
Right, so, um. So, uh, again, Gary was, you want to know if we can make, make it say. Five to seven members?
Yeah. With a quorum being three.
Yes, I don't know if that part can be with a quorum being three. Three, to give us some flexibility.
Right, in case we, in case all of a sudden we have a bunch of people that want to come on.
Yeah. Okay, I will, I will, I will send a, a note over the, Vin, Vin in the morning and ask if. If that's doable. Uh, and, uh, we'll see what he says.
Not, it's not.
Yeah, I know, he, he spent some time, like I said, he, he had his computer with him, he was looking at the code, he was looking at some other regulations, he was trying to find a way. That we could do three without changing anything and he really. Didn't, he couldn't, so, um, he said basically just reduce the size of the committee. Okay, so I will, I will. Do what you asked and said, ask Vin to change the. If we can do fi- uh, some wording like five to seven.
Um, I mean, I don't honestly know if we've had more than five in a long time.
Oh, well, we had four as of. I, I mean, I'll tell you when we had four, we've had three as of April of this year, we had four. In twenty twenty one.
Yeah.
For that, I didn't go back far enough to see who was on the committee before twenty twenty one.
Because it was probably.
January twenty twenty one, January twenty twenty one was when we had four.
And we had Dennis and we had, what was her name?
We had many.
Yeah, sorry, okay, yeah, no, I'm just trying to remember.
No, but it's been a while, it, it's been, this is two years since we had four, it's probably been three or four years since we had more than four.
Since we have, whatever we do, we just gotta get the quorum down to three.
Yeah. All right. That it? On that, any more discussion on that? No, okay. There's some writing tomorrow.
I'm looking for that.
Um, program request for an update, so I sent everyone that the other day and I asked if you look at it. I showed you what it is and what I recommended it be. Anyone have any comments?
No, I was just, the two things, um, the successors thing, which I think is a good addition, but isn't it worth us just putting? Um, Altice. Rather, if we're gonna revise it, we may as well make it the company that it currently is and then do its successors.
Um. What is it, does it say, I'm sorry.
The last section.
Uh, you're, wait, I'm talking about the program request form, you're talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped to the procedures, my bad.
Yeah, so the program request form, the change I made was if someone wants. Us to broadcast a previously re- recorded program. They would fill out this form, they would also fill out the form to request us to record a program.
I'm sorry.
Um, so. What I changed in that, in my recommendation was, it used to say. The form, the format you could request the program. In, or give us a programming with Super VHS, VHS and DVD.
Yes.
I took out the two VHSs and put in the format you can request us to broadcast your programming. If you're supplying us with a program, it's DVD, flash drive or other.
Yep, well, I, I think we shouldn't give other.
Okay.
I think that just kind of opens us up to. Random media types. I want it on Betamax.
No, no, well, we can, I think we can reject it, but if, if, if flash drives and DVDs go away.
And then we, then we revise it again.
Then we have to revise it again, right?
Yeah, I mean, the only other one I would think of is if there's like a Dropbox or something, but I really also don't want to do that, I think it should be a physical medium.
Well, again, this is for someone giving us a previously recorded program.
Right, and it should be in the, in the, whatever we want it to be, whether it be. DVD or Betamax or whatever, not, I know not Betamax, but.
No, no, yeah, but I mean, like, also, like, does it make sense, and Chris, this is maybe a question for you, right? DVD is probably a pain in the butt, well, you have to sit there and digitize it.
Yeah, it takes the longest out of all of the methods, yeah.
Should we just put flash drive and actually specify what kind of encoding it should be? Like MP four?
I mean, MP four would make the most sense, um. My only question. Is what about YouTube?
It's hard to pull things off of YouTube if it's not ours.
So, yeah, like, if someone requests a. Uh, program, then it's, they, they want a, a usable file that they could share or whatever they. I mean.
Well, it's, it's really what we want, right, what, what, if somebody's gonna ask, like, if, you know, the, the police department produces a program. What do you need it in to make it the most effective, get it on the air without the least number of steps?
How about? How about if I change other to other acceptable, other format acceptable to OGAAT?
I'm just, MP four or flash drive, that's what I would recommend.
Uh, yeah, man, I honestly think we probably should keep it simple at this point, I mean, like DVD, we can do it. Right, but do we want to always say we're gonna have a DVD drive, I mean, computers don't even come with DVD drives anymore.
You know, I like, it's kind of funny, because. Uh, Rocky that puts on the, the Labor Day concert. Um, it's, it's Rocky that does that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so he always asks for a DVD every year. Uh, of the footage and. I, I said, do you want me to put it on a flash drive, and he's like, no, we have a whole collection of the DVDs.
Well, remember, Chris, what's helped correct it on my part, this is incoming stuff, this is not how we give it to Rocky. This is somebody producing a program and gives it to us to.
Right, if we could still make DVDs, like, shouldn't we?
Accept DVDs, I get your, I get your point, yeah.
Um, but.
Yeah, I think, I think we should just remove the other and just say flash drive and then put in parentheses MP four. And we update it if our needs change. Because I don't, I really don't want somebody showing up with a random other like Betamax and saying, we want you to put this on air. You know, I mean, like, I mean, I'm sure Ron would do it, but.
Ron could probably.
A good amount of time.
I'd like it on a three quarter inch, if you could.
Yeah, eighteen millimeter, I don't know.
Sixteen millimeter film. Yeah, all right, all right, so Gary, you have an opinion?
I think I gave it already.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think it's just, you know, I think we, we should determine what we want. Whether it's MP four or. You know. QRX TV.
So. Should it just say DVD and flash drive MP four then?
I think that's the best.
All right.
Because as long as we have DVDs, we should, we.
We can do it, yeah.
If, if we produce it, I think we should be able to take them, right, because if we give somebody a copy and they ask us to re-put it on air, I mean, really, that should, we should allow that.
All right. Okay. Uh, by the way, for this. I already told. Vin Moreno that I'm gonna run this stuff by him. So he's gonna get a shot at it also. So the next thing was the policies and procedures. And I, again, I sent the original, I sent you a copy of the, the existing one and. On my, uh, uh, my recommendations with markups and highlights on it, the markup on it. Um, Mike, you started to talk about it, so why don't you continue?
Okay, yes, I, I'm starting at the bottom and working my way backwards, just because it's easier. Um, number thirteen, so right now it says by, uh, Cable Vision of Southern Connecticut, Cable Vision. Um, that's not a company anymore, so I would probably say we should probably, if we're gonna update it, it should be Altice or whatever the. Current company is called, and let me see if I can figure that out.
Are you in the policies of the procedure, I'm sorry?
Mine's procedure. The one I'm, I'm reading.
Or in the procedures, that's the second document, okay. And you say item thirteen?
Yep.
Item thirteen, okay. So Altice.
Yeah, I think it's Altice.
Successors.
Yeah, Altice USA or its successors, right? Um, just, I mean, might as well have the company, right, the other thing is, so this section always bothered me just because. Cable Vision really has no say over us. Um, so it just never made sense to me why we would say that their procedures would circumvent ours. So I don't know if we want to put like, you know, policies by Pura or something like that, but, uh, to my, best of my knowledge, Altice or Cable Vision. Would have never had any say over us, it was all, the, the PEG program was always specified by Pura and the rules came from Pura.
I seem to remember that. And I, I just seem to remember that we have to stay within Cable Vision's. Policies and procedures also. Like if they say you couldn't show something on Cable Vision, we couldn't show it. That's just, just a recollection I have.
And I mean, then in that case, do we have to also put Frontier and possibly now Comcast?
Hmm.
Because we are broadcasting, at least definitely on Frontier, but we're working on Comcast.
Yeah.
So I mean, it might be a question for Vinnie.
Well, I got, yeah, he's gonna run, run through it anyway.
Right, so, but I, right now, I think we should at least just fix Cable Vision to the right.
Yeah, I will do that, that, I've got it that note. Um. Anything else that you saw?
Yeah, my, I think, and I know we've talked about it, and I don't know if we've defined a date, I think you swapped out, um, thirty seven dollars for videotaped with thirty seven dollars for a flash drive, which is not a horrible number. Um, I was just thinking, because I know we did searches and found thump, flash drives and everything for like ten bucks and stuff like that. Um, I don't know, like. It, I, I, the number still seems a little bit low to me. But. You know, I, I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to thirty seven dollars, I was just thinking maybe of making that forty dollars just to give us a little bit more headroom on that. But that one I'm open to.
Gary? Any opinion?
Why are we changing the price, it's, you can buy. You know, flash drives for a buck each.
Well, I mean, it depends on the size, right, our video programs are pretty large.
You can get a big, you can get a big flash drive for maybe five bucks.
Yeah, but you still have to add in Chris's time.
Chris's labor, yeah, or, or Ron's labor, right, labor period.
It's like, yeah, so this is like real time, it's, you know, if you're not doing something else. If you, if you have nothing else to do, you're sitting there waiting for the thing to finish transferring.
But we'd take Chris even more time if she wanted a DVD, because, uh, his files are on MP four now, and he'd have to convert to a DVD.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing going for a DVD right now is literally we pay pennies for those.
Yeah, and that we want to charge thirty dollars for.
Right. So I mean, I guess, let, let me, let's put this way, right, Chris, from you sitting down at the computer. To getting this. to getting this moved either to DVD or to flash drive, how long does it take?
I mean, pretty much as long as it takes to transfer it to a flash drive. Uh, you know, from the computer, so I mean.
Couple of minutes.
Couple of minutes, I mean, with the way with, you know, computer speeds now and processors being really fast, it doesn't take very long. So the labor portion, there's not much labor when you're making a flash drive. So.
How many have we been asked for over the last five years?
Like twelve.
We were asked for a whole bunch of four or five months, maybe six months ago. So uh someone asked Chris for a whole bunch of DVDs, I think, or flash drives. Meeting, I remember that.
There was a, yeah, first selectmen's meeting for for some topic, yeah. I think there was three meetings or something like that. Um, so right now, thirty two gig for sorry, three pack of SanDisk, so name brand, not, you know, random brand here. Thirty two gigs is fifteen dollars, so you're talking about five dollars per drive, yeah. So I mean, that's actually that's a fine price. I mean, if we're talking, like, do we just make both of them thirty dollars, like thirty dollars DVD or flash drive and just be done? How long does it take you to burn a DVD, Chris? Should the DVD be more based on the labor?
Yes, converted.
It would, yeah, I mean, it would take about. I mean, it could take up to an hour, uh maybe, maybe not, I mean, depending on the DB, if it if it requires burning two DVDs, um it could take, and 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 I think a DVD can hold what, like two and a half hours of footage?
Yes.
Probably, so if it was.
Per DVD, Chris, per DVD, how long does it take to put it on one DVD?
Yeah.
Maybe thirty to forty five minutes.
So we just say an hour, because it's time to sit down, time to get ready, time to take tear up, tear down, so. I I don't remember what Chris's hourly is right now, I know.
Well, that's like, yeah, I mean, you're talking like twenty four or something. To, you know, for an hour.
Okay, so I mean, I think that thirty dollars is probably right in line then.
I was I was too, we have to be so kind to the rec- requester.
Well, that's kind of where I was kind of going is if we up the price of the DVD, we can make people try to use flash drive rather than DVD, right? So if it were trying to discourage that, because it does take a lot more time to do DVD, make that thirty seven dollars, make the flash drive thirty.
Make make the DVD forty. Make the other one twenty thirty.
I'm fine with that. I I'm fine with flipping them and making the the DVD forty and the flash drive thirty.
You're making ten bucks an hour, huh?
Okay, we agree then forty for the DVD and thirty for the flash drive?
I'm good.
Fine with me.
Okay. All right, well, if anything else then that it needed to be updated?
Um, the other, sorry.
Uh, I spoke with Carol Flannery the other day. And she said they're thinking about getting a van. So they could equip the van instead of, I I I was thinking about watching Chris load up all the stuff to do a onsite show in his car. Uh, and then letting like getting it all out, lining it up, doing the job, wearing it, and then unwearing it, put it all back in the car again. If it was all in a small van, and it just has a wire to the camera. Uh, made a lot of sense to me.
So, sorry, Ron, can I just finish the procedures part?
Well, she's she pointed out that uh uh vans uh vans are very inexpensive, you can buy a used van. It's not a big deal to own one.
Here, Ron, we're talking about policies and procedures, not equipment.
I'm sorry.
We're talking about the policies and procedures. We're not talking about buying equipment here.
I'm sure I missed that.
Um, the only other item Saul was under C of that, got the the where the under the copies. Um, where copies will made on DVD and other media which conforms to OGA equipment. I think we should just put DVD or flash and just not say other media again.
Where is that? What what section is that?
Uh, so it's gonna be section seven sec- uh sections, sorry, seven C four.
Yeah, copies will be made on DVD or.
Flash drive. I would just, I would just say or flash drive.
Flash drive.
Which conforms to OGA equipment, leave that section in.
Why not just say, oh, the media which conforms, we're making these copies, it's just us, this up to us to decide.
Okay, that's fine. To to you and then what was the other one? The other one was the policies, right? For my markups, one second. There was one item on this, and I think we talked about it. Hold on, that's the procedures, I don't, did you send the policies?
Hang on, you you're in the.
So it's all, it's all, it's all in one document, never mind, okay.
Hang on a second, Mike.
Yeah.
So you you talked about in the procedures, you talked, we just talked about seven C.
Yep.
In the in the procedures, the previous page, item two B. I think I added internet.
Yes, that was fine, yep.
Okay. Now, what else did you want to do?
The under, I believe it was under policies, we had our retention period.
You don't know what paragraph that is?
I'm looking for my markups, hold on.
Okay.
This is the draft.
Where did you go? Found this previously, where to go?
Wasn't her procedures?
Oh, no, it's under, it's under procedures, it's section five. Retention of recorded programs, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, thank you, Marlene.
Two of five. Item five.
Yeah, I I mean, so I it says six months for record or required to keep it. Which we keep it a lot longer than that, so I was gonna say we might as well just make that one year. And retained for a maximum of three years. So I just wanted to make sure we were in line with what we actually do.
If you want to keep it longer, you can keep it longer. It doesn't mean you have to get rid of it after six months, like.
Yeah, it says May, okay, maybe recycled, okay.
You know, so that doesn't mean that you have to, you have to, you can't keep it longer, it just means, you know, we're gonna keep it six months, we may keep it long, you know, we may have it longer than that, but for now, you can expect six months.
Okay, that's fair. No, and I know this kind of became more of an issue where, like, again, it says the original material erased, right? So this has always changed, right? Sometimes we recorded directly to DVD, we did those recorders for a while, and now it's really on the tell view. So I guess if the original copy is considered the tell view copy, is six months too long for that? Because and then it becomes a digital copy elsewhere, or does it not matter? Because it's not, it's digital and it doesn't matter.
I think as long as you have a copy, it doesn't really make a heck of, it doesn't have to be the original. If you have a whole copy of it. If you don't have a whole copy of it, then maybe it does.
According to public, yeah. So maybe we just get rid of the word original, just say material ma- that and the material erased.
Well, the original copy would be the one with the titles on it, right?
Yeah.
The original copy would be the edited, well, not, I mean, edited in terms of the ends trimmed off. Any breaks trimmed off and then titles at the beginning and the end, that's a, that's an original copy, right?
But, yeah, I can see that.
The broadcast copy.
It's it's not, I mean, um, yeah. But.
It it's just a weird sanction because it says recycled and we don't really do it on physical medium anymore, so I just.
Yeah, but again, it's it's maybe recycled and it it doesn't mean you're gonna do it, you can do it.
Right.
I'm not, it's it's kind of ambiguous and that's, so let it's flexible, I'll say it that way.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we just get rid of the word recycled, right? Cause I mean, at the end of the day, it's a hard drive, it's gonna get erased and reused or whatever, but it's.
Yeah, so that's that's what recycled mean meant to me when I read it.
Okay, that's fair. I was still thinking of it in the old tape format.
Here.
Oh, get get to the tw- twenty first century, will you?
I'll take a bus.
Thanks, that works.
Okay, was that it, Mike, or anything else?
And then I guess the only other question was that three years, so departmental recording, we require to hold it for three years. I I mean, I, we've always kept it for longer, but I guess is that requirement coming from something else?
Well, that's, I don't think that's the stuff we record on. I'm not sure what departmental programs means, though.
Departmental program, any program prepared for or provided by town department agencies with the, this is in section four, letter B, right?
Yeah.
Any program.
Program they provide us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Edited and deemed appropriate by the coordinator or agent of the coordinator and determination may be made to result. Policy restrictions due to technical scheduling or staff limitations may be subject to review of the committee. So I mean, I like, I think we can technically produce departmental contact. I think the example was the old fire select, uh first selectmen chats. I would consider that a departmental program, because it's not a public meeting.
Yeah.
Um, I I don't think it's a problem for us keeping it three years. I just want to make sure we're not putting ourselves in any kind of risk. By saying we will. Especially like, I mean, again, I don't know what retention means anymore, like, we we've never been able to keep online on demand uh programs up for three years.
YouTube is gonna sort of just, I mean, we're not gonna necessarily take our videos off of YouTube.
And whatever, right now, we're not until.
Right now, we're not, but.
Until Google changes its mind, right? But yes.
Oh, yeah, puts a storage limit on our via or channel or something, but. What are we?
I don't, I don't, you know, we we just, we just last summer, let let somewhere, somewhere in the last year. May have been the spring. Uh, Chris was asked to clean our stuff out of the town attic.
A hundred percent. I know we've kept stuff for thirty years.
And there was ancient stuff there.
Yeah.
He identified, I guess, the cabinet that could go, and I think it finally got tossed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that was really old stuff, I think, that.
Yeah, any hard copies.
That's from the nineties.
Well, there was, there were, uh, we we were burning DVDs up until maybe two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. So the DVDs, all the hard copies were disposed of. And what is remaining are whatever, you know, whatever we have that's digital. Because we were, I mean, technically, I think our retention, I mean, we, I think we need to look into our retention policy and figure out what what are we, you know, what what is the obligation there?
Yeah, and I mean, I haven't been able to find anything on the website from the town saying what their retention policy is, so I don't know.
I think there's a, I think there's a state obligation, yeah.
Talk to Mary Shaw.
Yeah, and she, I.
She has, she's obligated under law of to retain records for a certain amount of time, so she can give you that timeframe. I know the school system gets rid of um special ed records after five years.
Yeah, that's a that's a mandatory day, you have to shred them.
Yeah, there's always a notice in the papers from Amity saying that they're gonna be destroyed if you want them. Notify us of, you know, come get them.
By X state.
Otherwise, they, yeah. Otherwise, they get destroyed. So there is some precedent out there in law.
Yep.
For retention.
And we and we went over that, and I need to review that again, because we did go over that when when we had to dispose of the mass amount of stuff that was stored up in the attic. We wanted to make sure that we weren't throwing anything away that we shouldn't. And we were, I mean, I, what I remember is, I think, like, uh, the zoning meetings, we had to retain them for a year and, but I think uh most other meetings were only like six months.
Right, which is, I think, where we have in the public meetings that say, that's why we say six months in here, because I think they did research that originally, but I guess with the three year mark, uh so one, I my understanding is our documents, our our recordings and meetings are not supposed to be public record. I don't know whether that gets overwritten by any state laws or anything like that, but in this procedure, it says several times, we are not a record of the meeting, right? The official record, the official record is the minutes.
Minutes, right.
Unless otherwise specified by the FOI law.
Exactly, which we may get overwritten by that. I'm not saying that we're not the record, right? And there on the side of caution. I I just personally think that departmental programs should probably be a year, because otherwise we are required to keep hard drives and everything. The digital era is a little harder to keep things longer, um making sure hard drives don't crash and we have backed up places, that kind of thing.
Sure.
I guess where that's where I'm going is I'd like to see five B become one year. I'm not saying I want to get rid of them, but I'm just saying for safety's sake, we only require to hold on over a year.
I could ask Marino.
Yep.
Okay, I wrote it.
And that's, and that is all the notes I had. Thank you, Saul.
Okay, I will ask then if one year is enough for B. But I recall these were written by a lawyer.
Amory.
Was on the committee at the time.
Amory Payon Mullen, yep.
So I I would have assumed she knew what the law was at the time, maybe the law is different today, I don't know.
It very good point, but I think they were also based on some template that another town had.
Uh, she, I I, we got the impression that they were based on Wallingford's, but I'm not.
They were based on Wallingford's um policies and procedures.
Right.
I can, I can, you know, when I go over this, I will make, you know, I when I send them over to Vin Marino, I will ask him if that one, if that three years should be one year or something else.
Yeah, th- thank you, and thank you, Marlene, for finding that section. I was having problems there.
Any other comments on the policies and procedures documents? No, okay, so I'll I'll over the next few days finalize what we've discussed. Send you all a copy of what it looks like, and then also send it to Attorney Marino. Um, for him to look over. And see if he has any additions or subtractions or changes or anything. Now, Ron started talking about buying a van.
Yeah. Well, what did you think of that idea?
I don't think we have thirty thousand dollars.
You think it would take thirty thousand dollars? To 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 buy a used van, I'm thinking more like forty five hundred.
I also don't think that uh town would appreciate OGA having its own vehicles that they have to maintain.
Yeah, or or an old van, right?
And and additional liability issues and insurance issues.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't think OGA should own a van.
North Haven has one.
West Haven what has one?
Dog collector.
What what investment, who invest, West Haven has a van?
I'm sorry, I said, no, North Haven has a van.
North Haven?
Yeah.
They have a different setup than we do.
I I, I think it's a hor- I think it's not a good idea.
Yeah. Uh, North Haven has a complete, I don't think they have a committee.
No, they have a third, they have a a provider who does North Haven and to New Haven, and I forgot what the third town is, they cover three towns.
I I I I don't think we need a van.
Yeah, I don't. I don't think so either.
I think it's just adding to something that we, just making it bigger that we then we need to be in.
Yeah. I'm not recommending it, but I thought we should discuss it.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfectly fair. I will make a motion to adjourn if one is.
I'll agree to that, because I'm gonna fall asleep.
Even though I know we can't make motions, but I would like to say that publicly.
All right.
All right, I'm going to switch us off the air.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all, thank you, Mike. Good night. Good night.